Good evening and welcome to the March 27, 2023 Cabarrus County Board of Education Budget Work Session. I'd like to recognize our board members, Mr. Sam Twedaway, Ms. Keisha Sandage, Mr. Tim Farr, our Deputy Superintendent John Legrand, our Vice Chair Rob Walter, Board Members Laura Lindsay, Pam Escobar, and our Board Clerk Kristy Williams. We will move to 1.01 and I will call this meeting to order. We'll move to 2.01 and the Pledge of Allegiance if you'll stand and join me.
(Inaudible)
Board members, we will move to 3.01 to adopt the agenda. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Ms. Lindsay.
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Farr. We have a motion by Ms. Lindsay and a second by Mr. Farr. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Board members. The agenda has been adopted. We will move to 4.01 in our budget update. We will ask our CFO, Ms. Carol Herndon, to the podium. Welcome.
Get all my papers sorted here. Thank you, Board, so much for the opportunity to have our first conversation around our 2023-2024 budget. I'm excited to share with you what has been weeks of work collaboratively within our district, and I'm truly honored to present this to you all on behalf of Dr. Kupicki, our Cabinet, and really, our entire district. So please feel free to stop me along the way with questions, and I want this to be a conversation, not just a presentation, and we'll get started. Just wanted to highlight, this is the first of three conversations with the Board of Education about our budget for next school year. We will then again talk about our budget on April 3 after we've done the public hearing, and then we would hope to have the budget approved when we meet on the 17th. So that's the plan for our conversations with the Board of Education. And then we are scheduled to present to Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners on April the 27th. So that's a bit of a summary of what is ahead of us as it relates to the budget and the conversations that are before us. I will not review this line by line, but I wanted to point out for the Board just for reference and just so that you can have assurance that the work that I am going to share with you is in compliance with Board Policy 8100, which covers the budget presentation from a local budget perspective, and the checkmark means that I have deliberately read-
Who's moving your slide presentation?
Pardon me?
Your slide presentation.
Oh, well, thank you. I'm not moving. Sorry. Here are the dates. Trust me, okay? I was just talking away, hadn't even looked. All right, sorry. Somebody make sure they're advancing and let me know if they're not. Thank you. So I did want the Board to have assurance that I had reconciled all of our work against our Board of Education Policy 8100, which governs the development of the local budget, and the checkmark means that I have read each of the policy provisions and reconciled and confirmed that we are in compliance with these policy provisions as we walk through this process. So just wanted you to know that I had been deliberate in taking a look at what's expected for us to do through this local budget development process and what has actually taken place. And it continues on to the next slide. All right, twice, I got it now. So I want to talk a little bit about our local budget development process for 2023-2024. As you all are aware, we have been pursuing a different budget development process for the upcoming school year, and I'm going to get into the details behind that in just a moment. But ultimately, our goal that we tethered back to during the whole budget development process was to create a 2023-2024 budget that supported and was in service to our recently approved strategic plan. So we used our books a lot along the way and made sure that the conversations that we were having and the funding choices that we were pursuing did in fact support and push forward delivery against our strategic plan and the goals and objectives that we've set out for our district. So as a reminder, we are looking at our budget development process considering the following items. Our school level positions are being summarized through our allotment conversations with our principals, and I'm happy to report that on Friday, we finished six of six days worth of really lovely conversations with our principals where we were able to share with them the allotment formulas and the allotments that were produced by those formulas and have a real collaborative conversation about what that meant for their individual schools. We gave them time to hear what we had summarized, but also, more importantly, let them share what is unique and what kind of special needs each individual school had. And so while they may not have loved the answer, they were really grateful for and appreciative of the process, and so were we. It was exhausting work, but we all look forward to the conversations, and I think that builds a relationship with our principals that they don't feel done to or they don't feel like they've been given a number with no information or understanding of how the number developed. It was a bit mysterious in the past, and we were incredibly transparent. In fact, we presented to our principals a comprehensive list of all allotments for every position that we use our allotments for in their school buildings except for one, which was a long way from what we started, great work we started last year, but we probably presented them with about a third of the allotments last year, just as we were getting started with this new process. Over the past six days, we presented them with almost everything they need to plan for the school year in front of them, and they were super grateful for that, and it's not even quite yet the end of March. So for them to have that information, and we're not quite done, our commitment is to be done by the 31st. We've got to step back now that we've had all those meetings and look at the big picture. We've looked at it school by school by school. We've got to step back and look at the big picture, but I'm confident that we're going to meet that March 31st deadline, and we're going to equip our principals and our schools with enough time to do sufficient and effective planning for personnel at the school level for the upcoming school year. So that process has been very rewarding and collaborative, and I think has created trust and transparency between the district office and our principals, and I'm looking forward to continuing to evolve that process in future years. For our non-salary and benefit line items that are part of our operating expense budget, as you all are aware, we used a zero-based budgeting approach where we did not just say, "We want what we got this year plus these add-ons." We started literally at zero, and we built budgets by line item with a full description, validation that it supported the strategic plan, whether or not it was a one-time or recurring expense, and what we needed to consider for future years if it was recurring. And everybody filled out their templates and turned them in, and we added it all up, and it was a really big number, which we expected it to be a really big number. That's what happens when you budget from zero up. And so Cabinet immediately scrolled away in a room for many, many days and talked through what was priority, what was a need, and what was a wish. And we got rid of our wishes first and then started having super collaborative conversations about what our needs were. And we were all there representing our own areas and those of us that manage areas that are closest to our schools, representing our schools as well, but it was really cool to experience how together we started talking about what was best for the district versus what was best for our individual departments. And we made some tough decisions in that regard. And I always say, we didn't necessarily agree on where we landed, but we aligned around where we landed. So as we face our district, we are one team and one voice around this budget proposal. And I'm so proud of my Cabinet colleagues. This was brand-new, never been done before. They had never been exposed to the level of detail around putting the budget together that we forced on them this year, and they absolutely rose to the occasion, and the conversations were rich, they were full of healthy debate, but at the end of the day, we aligned on what was best for our district and, most importantly, what was best for our children, and it was just a really neat experience to be a part of.
Just so the public can follow along, does the dollar sign notate anything somewhere?
Pardon?
There's like a dollar sign on the bullets, and I just wanted to see if that notated something somewhere.
Um... I can't, it doesn't mean anything, so I apologize.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
It doesn't mean anything to me, so I apologize for that. Please disregard. We'll clean that up.
Good job.
You have great eyes, I'm jealous. It does not mean anything, and we will make sure it goes away. Thank you. The other thing I just wanted to mention that I'm most proud of as it relates to the efforts around zero-based budgeting is that this is a student-focused and staff-serving budget, and that makes me incredibly proud. And I'm just, again, a big thank you to my Cabinet colleagues for believing in a new process and starting right off the bat, jumping in and playing super, super hard. We have had many, many related conversations. From a capital outlay perspective, this changed the least as it relates to previous years. Our construction department and our facilities and maintenance department worked with schools and other departments to summarize our capital needs for the coming year, including the capital plan that was recently shared with you all and approved by you all. All of that was done collaboratively between departments and with our schools, and included at the end of last calendar year walkthroughs through all of our facilities so that they could see with their own eyes where we had the greatest needs with regard to capital And finally, I just wanted to remind everyone that either indirectly or directly, this new local budget development process did involve all stakeholders that were formally included in the budget committee process. And specifically, a lot of our stakeholders had input into the strategic plan development process, and again, this guided all of the decisions that have manifested in the budget that I'm sharing with you tonight. And just as a reminder, these are our six strategic priorities: student wellness, teaching and learning, diverse talent pipeline, early learning, technology-enhanced learning, and community alignment. So that is sort of a reminder of the process that we used to develop our local budget proposal for your consideration. I do want to share some information and data that I think is important for the Board to understand before we actually get into our continuation and expansion request, and hope that you'll find this information meaningful. The first is a graph that summarizes our historical state per pupil expenditures or appropriations, and if you look at the yellow line, you might think that we see a nice increase over the year in our state per pupil expenditure information. However, we have inflation-adjusted those numbers so that we reflect today's dollars because we all know now more than ever that today's dollars do not go as far as dollars yesterday in the years that we're presenting historically. So if you look at the inflation-adjusted numbers, you'll see that we're actually down a bit with regard to our per pupil expenditure, and that's concerning because we've known, however we've not seen until laying it out this way, that we do not get funded from a state perspective for inflation. And that has been very challenging for us as a district, particularly in high inflation times like the ones we've been experiencing the past two years. I thought this was pretty eye-opening and thought it would be a good piece of information to share with you all. Same exact information from a local per pupil expenditure perspective, you'll see... Oh, pardon. Thank you. There we go. You'll see some up and downs a little bit on the yellow line, which are the actual per pupil expenditure information, not as linear, but you'll also see the same dynamic working if you inflation adjust and bring everything to the current year's data. Again, not necessarily reflecting the inflationary issues that we faced over this time period, and just good to know that while we're grateful to get increases in per pupil expenditures from both our state government and our local government, it doesn't necessarily go as far as it did in the previous years, and I just found that enlightening as we jumped into this process. Likewise, this is some additional information, and I'm glad to share this with you. I stumbled across a really neat offering on DPI's website. It's called their statistical profile, and all of the information that I'm sharing with you came from that statistical profile that is well-maintained, doesn't have our 2022-2023 information because the year isn't finished yet, but they quickly update that after year end, and there is just a host of information, both at the state level and the LEA level, that provides great insight around how we are funded and how our funding compares to other districts, and information about personnel, and all sorts of data that you can spend a lot of time in there if you go there and see what's available. Super easy to navigate, and I'm happy to send you that link if you're interested. This was also an interesting aha moment for me. I had never looked at this, but you'll see that sadly, over the time period presented, we have ranked near the bottom of all 115 LEAs as it relates to funding from our state. So we're in that 105 to 115 out of 115 with regard to funding from the state.
Can you break that down just a little bit further so that people clearly understand what that means? Because that's the difference.
So, okay, I was going to say a little bit more, and if that's not enough, stop me, okay? So what's happening here is that we do not receive low-well funding as a county from the state. We do not receive small county funding because we're not a small county. So some of the allotments that are available to other districts, we do not get, and so what that has resulted in is that we are at the bottom of the list. So there's 115 LEAs in our state, and historically, we have been funded in the 105 to 115. One year, we were actually 115. In this case, you want to be at the top of the list, not at the bottom of the list. And so it puts a lot of pressure on our county funding when we are at the bottom of the funding list from a state perspective. And we are the eighth-largest school district in North Carolina, and we have an excellent district with regard to student achievement, and people move to our county to attend Cabarrus County schools, yet we're faced with relatively low funding coming in from our state, which puts tremendous pressure on our county with regard to what we need from them in order to maintain the programs and the offerings that we provide to our students, which lead to high achievement, and obviously, our number eight status comes from ADM, but more students means we can continue to prosper. So, does that help?
It does help. So for like the largest district in North Carolina, are they like 115 with respect to the funding?
Not exactly. It varies, but they're down there with us. Can't think of a better way of saying that.
That helps to explain. Thank you.
Yes. I also, because I wanted to take a look at this and had not seen it, this is the same exact information, but it looks at our local per pupil expenditures, and so you'll see, not at the bottom. This most recent year, which would have been 2021, 2022, we were 40th, which puts us in the top 35 percentile, if you will. But again, as the eighth-largest district, we probably would like to be somewhere in the top 25%. Now, we are very blessed. Our county has funded us and funded us well, and we'll talk about some of the specifics when we get into the numbers, but even at that level of funding, with all due respect, we need more. And again, partially because of what we just talked about from a state funding perspective. And if we want to maintain our reputation as a high-performing, a high-achieving school district, we're going to be leaning into our county for something more than what we have been asking in the past. Does that make sense? Wanted just to remind you, I won't spend a lot of time here because we've talked about this in the past, but I always think it's good to level-set with regard to how we've spent our local budget recently. You'll see here that the majority of our spending is salary and benefits at 58%. However, remember that our total spending on salary and benefits across all funds is 80%, so we actually do fund fewer salary and benefit expenditures on our local budget because our county likes for us to spend our money on things, and I get that, right? If it weren't for our county, we would not have funding for technology or maintenance and repairs and other central office sort of behind-the-scenes student support efforts that we do. And so those are the things they like to fund, and that has been consistent over many, many years. Just FYI, though, I did want to share with the Board that we currently have almost 400 positions, both certified and non-certified or classified positions that are locally funded. So while we have close to 5,000 employees, we do have folks that are funded at the local budget level.
Carol?
Yes?
Can you just go back to the chart?
Right here.
Yeah, so can you just explain that 7% for charter schools? Because I don't think people necessarily understand that-
Oh, the charter schools?
Yeah, that we give money to charter schools right now.
We do. We have to pass through our per pupil expenditure to any charter schools that have students that are domiciled in Cabarrus County School District but have chosen to go to a charter school. So our county has been gracious to fund that pass-through, but that is part of how we spend that money from the county. They give it to us, we pass it through, and we've been very lucky that up until this point at least, our county has been great in funding what we have to pass through, if that makes sense. So that charter schools, as you all know, there's a lot of conversation about charter school funding that will not be good for Cabarrus County schools or any other LEA in our state where basically, we have to pass through everything, including fund balance, including capital outlay, including our special revenue funds, and that would be foundational gifts or donations or contributions that were given to us that we would have to give a portion, 7% based on charter school ADM as a percentage of our total ADM, we would have to pass through to them. It would be devastating for our district. Does that help?
Yes.
All right. And so here, just a quick graphic in, just not trying to spend too much time looking backwards, but I am proud of, just like if you look at our total funding or our state funding, you'll see the big slice of the pie, the yellow, is student-facing instructional services, and it should be, and I'm glad to always summarize that it in fact is. Just a quick look at our enrollment trends over the past handful of years. We are projecting enrollment for 2023-2024 to be at 35,533 students. That's up about 1,000 over this year, which is great news. That means we'll get more money from the state, and we're grateful for that. But we're not yet seeing the sharp increases in ADM that we expect to happen in 2024-25 and 2025-26. So next year, and we'll talk a little bit more about this in just a minute, is a tough year for us because while we're seeing growth, we're not seeing the sharp growth that we anticipate following the year that is in front of us. So combine that with the fact that we are unwinding ESER and the challenges that that brings, puts a lot of pressure on the budget that's before us. Likewise, if you look at-
So Carol, sorry, just to clarify, so what you're saying is, is we're seeing growth in student population, but we're not seeing growth in money from the state?
No, we will see growth. We're just seeing incremental growth. The projections for sharp increases in ADM are a year out, right? So we're thinking if we can make it through this challenging year of 2023-2024 with incremental growth, which we're happy for, and that will result in more funding from the state, it isn't sharp enough to see our way through what we think we need to put forth with regard to serving our students.
But that goes back to the 200 student, or 200 positions with the ESER funds that we have to cover, right?
Yes, and we're down below that, but absolutely that-
You're not getting enough growth funds that would offset those positions.
Right. We're having to use that incremental state funding to help us unwind ESER. That's absolutely right. Before we jump into the actual funding request that I want to put in front of you tonight, I did want to summarize for the Board because I think this is something that the Board should be super proud of. As we were going through this process, and again, as you're building things from the bottom up and you're looking at what we have funded and what we haven't funded, and kind of going through the history of our budget development over the years, my Cabinet colleagues and I were able to summarize some pretty impressive programs that we've been able to fund at the request of our community or at the request of our county or at the request of our Board that we do not get any funding from the state for. So this is an impressive list, and I want you all to be proud of it, and I think it's important for us to keep this in our thinking as we move into our requests for the upcoming year. So we have SRO, School Resource Officers, in every school. That's unheard of. That doesn't happen in other districts in the state of North Carolina. We're proud that it happens here. We have, over the years, we get very minimal funding support from the state as it relates to our CISP personnel, the folks that work on student wellness and mental health. So this would be our counselors, our psychologists, and our student social workers. Over the past 10 years, we've added eight personnel members to our work there, which has been helpful. It's still not enough. We still have high ratios with regard to CISP personnel to students, but we're making some progress in that regard, and it couldn't come at a better time for our young people that are dealing with lots of issues in this regard.
We also have nurses in every school too, right?
Pardon?
School nurses in every school?
Yes, sir. We don't fund those. Those are gifted to us by-
With county funds.
But we do have nurse coverage in every school. Yes, sir.
So my question was about a question that came from Commissioner Schu at the Legislative Agenda in relation to mental health substance use, direct acts is what I remember. Is this the direct acts that we could have been requesting from the county for help or assistance with mental health substance use services? And you may not know the answer to that.
Well, this was, this is not our ask for the coming school year. These are asks that have been funded in previous years.
And I think that that was the question. Have, has the school district asked the county-
Yes, ma'am.
-for support around?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so this will be a continuation of an act?
Yeah, this is in our base budget, so we would expect this to continue.
Okay.
And it has for seven years, right? We asked for this in 2016, right?
So this is not, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I clarify. This is not in relation to what the Amys were discussing in relation to the Legislative Agenda, and then Commissioner Schu said, "I'm wanting to see if there was a direct act for mental health substance use supports."
I apologize. I was not at the Legislative Agenda meeting, so I don't- I was not at the Legislative Agenda meeting, so I don't remember exactly-
My recollection, in previous visits, we have asked for positions, counselor positions, social worker positions. And I think it's, the request was more than eight, but the funding was, they funded eight positions.
I confirm they funded eight in 2016.
Yeah, Carol?
Yes, yes.
So the question, if I can answer the question. So Mr. Shu discussed when we presented at the last meeting where all commissioners were there, and Carol is correct, she would not have knowledge of this. So he talked about us building a, building extra positions in down the road. That was one of the suggestions that he made. So Keisha, these positions reflect the current ones that we continually get support for, but there are no new positions built into this budget.
So if there's a follow-up I can run down, I'll be happy to apologize. I just don't have the context for what was discussed at the Legislative Meeting.
Well, I think I answered that, I think I answered exactly what Keisha was asking. There's no, there are no new positions. That's something that we're looking at, Keisha. And the counselors are part of the ADM allotments that we get based upon our student population every year. That should go up if our ADM does continue to grow, and we won't know that until a little bit more down the road, and we can report back to you on that. But we did not build in any new positions. Does that make sense, Keisha?
Kinda, thank you.
You're welcome.
If I can answer that a different way on the third, please let me know. I'm glad to dig into that.
It may just be clarifying what he intended, he being Commissioner Shu. That may be where I need to start.
And I can own that. I can wrap back and make sure we address his question. Is that okay?
I just want to make sure we're not missing an opportunity to request for additional funds around mental health and substance use service because that's what I understood him axing. And I could be wrong, but that is my understanding of it.
All right, understand.
Can I ask something? I think what Commissioner Shu was trying to ask for, I think that the Amys, as she called them, gave us a number of what's needed. And I think Mr. Shu was wanting to know, has that been asked for?
Got it, okay.
Is that what you-
Tim, you just did such a good job with that.
All right, let me do some digging. I understand, thank you. I understand, okay. What's needed, they've shared, did we ask for it? We're not certain. Got it. Got it, thank you. All right, a couple of, oops, I went too far. A couple of other things that we wanted just to summarize and share with the board that have been funded over the years that we don't get support from the state for. Our program choice offerings, so all of our STEM, IB, a DLI offerings, that has been locally funded, and we know that that's a charm for our district, and people migrate to Cabarrus County Schools to take advantage of program choice. Also, our VEX robotics program and the fact that we have it in 34 schools, that has been locally funded and supported. We have credit recovery resources in all of our traditional high schools, and so these are resources that are dedicated to helping students catch up and get back on track with regard to their academic progress. We also have instructional technology facilitators or ITFs in all of our traditional high schools, and some level of coverage actually in all of our schools. And this again helps with student instruction from a technology perspective. We do not receive funding from the state to cover that many of our schools at some level or the other. And we have athletic trainers at most, all of our high schools and most of our middle schools, which is a really big deal. I don't know of any neighboring districts that have that type of coverage. Usually, they have part-time volunteer staff from health agencies in the neighborhoods. This is a really big deal for our district. And one thing that I'm really proud of is that during this school year that we're in now and the one before, we've been able to sustain funding for these programs that were either in response to a community ask or a county ask or a board ask. We were able to sustain funding for these important programs for our children despite the fact that, as you all know, we had a redirection of funding from our county from operating expense to capital outlay. We didn't cut this stuff out. So inherently, that meant, even though we weren't as deliberate about it as we have been through the zero-based budgeting process, we had to give something up to continue to do this great work that is so student-focused and student-centered and attractive for people who are considering Cabarrus County Schools. So that's a lot of context, and I hope it was meaningful to you in some way. Now we're going to hop into the actual funding considerations. And just like we have shared in previous years, we're going to break that down between operating expense continuation. And the best way for me to describe our continuation budget is it's just what we need to keep doing what we're doing right now. So it's not new people, it's not new things, it's just funding that we need from our county to continue to do what we are currently doing. We will also talk about our operating expense expansion budget, and we always break that down as requested by our county between technology, operational, and general. And then we will, I'm excuse you, technology, operational, and then FMD, Facilities and Maintenance Department. And then finally, we'll take a look at capital outlay. So our continuation request. The first one, as we've discussed several times previously, our county currently has budgeted for our local certified supplement to be paid at 11.5 percent. That is the funding they have built up over the years, but as you know, we currently pay our local certified supplement at 12 percent. So our first continuation request is that the county would fund the additional 0.5 percent so that we can continue to pay our local certified supplement at 12 percent. Any questions about that? All right. Our second request is related to expected, projected salary increases for our certified staff. As you are probably aware, our governor has released his first pass at the biennial budget for 2023 through 2026. And in that budget from the governor, he has summarized 10 percent increases for certified staff. We are currently projecting in this proposed budget 7 percent. The way I see it, who knows? There's a lot to do before we have a confirmed biennial budget and lots of conversations to be had. We're very excited because the Senate, excuse me, the House goes first, and they have indicated that they will publish their budget by Easter, which is about 10 days away. So that would be the earliest I can remember that happening. And then soon, the Senate will follow, and then they'll all start working together to collaborate and figure out what they're going to align around. My, you know, heart says I hope it's 10. My head says it probably won't be, so we settled on 7 percent at this point in this proposed budget. I did do some research with other districts. Maybe one or two went all the way to 10 at their first pass. Most are in the 4 to 5, 6, 7 percent range. So we're starting with 7, and we'll sit back and see what happens.
But that's all dependent, all dependent on what the state comes up with, right?
Pardon?
It's all dependent on what the state ultimately approves.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
So it could be four, it could be 10, it could be whatever. This is just a heads up to the county that those 139 positions that you mentioned earlier won't get a raise if we don't continue, if we don't match that because they're locally paid.
Absolutely, right. So we're just simply asking the county to match for our locally funded employees what will be given to state-funded employees once they land on that budget. Likewise, the governor's proposed budget calls for a 6.5 percent increase for non-certified, classified staff. We are going with 4.5 for all the same reasons I just mentioned, and the earlyness of the process and the work that's yet to be done on the state biennial budget, we're starting with 4.5. And I did do some quick math. If we went with 10 for certified and if we went with 6.5 for our non-certified classified folks, it would be another $1.5 million ask. So it's not inexpensive, and we're going to talk more about numbers in just a second. We also have, as I think the board is aware, we do have a non-certified classified step bump each year where certified folks receive one bump for every two years of service, and that's been a practice at Cabarrus County for many, many years. We have some general requests from a continuation perspective as it relates to information that we have received from DPI with regard to retirement rate and healthcare costs that we can expect in 2023, 2024. We are looking at an increase in the retirement rate from 24.5 percent to 24.62 percent, and also an increase in our share of healthcare costs from $7,396 to $7,619. And that's a per-eligible employee cost. And so we wanted to make sure that we factor that into our request. If there aren't any questions about continuation, I'll move on to expansion. Okay, great, thank you. All right. So we have three expansion requests. The first is as it relates to repair and maintenance needs. We are continuing to see an increased need in repair and maintenance because we do have aging facilities at Cabarrus County Schools. We have a lot of new facilities, but we have a lot of older facilities. And with every year that goes by, things break and make it unsafe for our students and unsafe for our staff. And so we are coming to the board for support to make sure that we can keep up with those rising levels of repair and maintenance. And we're talking about HVAC units and roofs and things that, when they are broken, are not conducive to learning and are not safe for our students or our staff. And we've also layered in to this projection and this expansion request a provision for inflation because we keep seeing the prices of materials and supplies going up even in the year that we're currently operating in. We're managing a super tight repair and maintenance budget this year because not only is the need great, but the costs are just continuing to escalate. And so we do have an inflation factor in that request as well. We are also asking for a bold, but much-needed increase as it relates to the instructional materials that we put in front of our students. And I'm going to invite Sarah to come up and share some specifics about that. But one thing that I learned as a non-educator, although I said this morning, my closest friends do call me an educator, so I'm going to hang in that space. But I learned that, as you can imagine, we haven't taken a close look at our curriculum and instruction materials since before the pandemic. And our learners have different needs today than they had before the pandemic, both academically and as it relates to social and emotional learning and issues as well. And so now was the time, particularly since our strategic plan is so grounded in revolutionary and robust learning opportunities for our students, that now was the time to do an overhaul as it relates to our instructional offerings. And my friend Sarah taught me also that we're seeing an unusual dynamic as it relates to the evolution of our instructional workforce because we have a lot of baby boomer seasoned, masterful teachers retiring and a lot of new BTs replacing them and coming into the workforce, which is wonderful. And many of them are coming in through non-traditional pathways. They didn't go to college to be teachers. They're coming in in a non-traditional pathway. And so we need our materials to be supportive of their journey as they are becoming masters of their trade, and we need for them to be understood and easy to navigate and easy for them to capture and grasp as they start to make their own mark in the profession. But I'm going to let Sarah come up, and he'll switch over. Sarah, to you.
Good evening. So obviously, you can see from curriculum and instruction, there is a big ask this year. And so I really tried as best as possible with the itemized list that we had for local requests to bucket it into really three key areas. The first of which is early childhood opportunities. So you heard during the Legislative Agenda our advocacy around additional pre-K programs, but even to be able to fill those pre-K programs, you have to be able to purchase the furniture, the resources, and the supplies to get those licensed to be able to move students into those positions. We are very hopeful and optimistic that we will have an increase in seats, but there still is a requirement and a due diligence on our parts to make sure that the facilities are ready and welcoming to those students. So there is a large component in that specific ask around furniture to expand our pre-K offerings. Additionally, in that is also funding to continue to grow and support our play-based kindergarten pilot, which you may have heard about. But it's specifically around developmental education and learning through inquiry-based, play-based instruction. And so it is very strategic, but with that comes the request of furniture, high-quality professional development around play-based learning, as well as additional resources for our teachers. And so we know that our five-year-olds learn differently than our 10-year-olds. And so we are really advocating that kindergarten classrooms look different and they feel different to meet the developmental needs of our students. And this is really evidenced at the state level, too, with their movement towards the NCE-LI or the kindergarten readiness tool, where we're really promoting play-based, inquiry-based instruction. I also think that as you look at our strategic plan, and it mentions this, these are the things that are going to put us on the map in terms of becoming a world-class education system. And we are one of the first in the state that's spearheading it. And with our five pilot programs, we already have 15 site visits from across the state. So people are very interested and intrigued around this work, but very candidly, there isn't a state funding source to be able to provide kitchens and the resources that we would want in terms of play-based learning furniture to be able to promote this model of instruction. Additionally, you'll see, as Carol mentioned previously, arts, STEM, and VEX enrichment experiences. So when you think about the experiences that we are able to provide students, where students take place in the arts and VEX programming at our schools, all of those things are not things that are state-funded. So those are local funding experiences to help students because we firmly believe that not only do we want to provide academic rigor, but we want students to have a well-rounded experience. And exposure to arts, STEM, language, VEX robotics are all part of the guaranteed experience we want our kindergarten through 12th grade students to go through as they continue through Cabarrus County Schools. And then finally, as Carol hit on previously, the guaranteed curriculum experience. And so I like to think of this as, as a sixth grader, and I'm in an English Language Arts classroom, the way the teacher chooses to differentiate or scaffold learning should look different from classroom to classroom, school to school. But everyone at a baseline should have a floor or a core experience that they go through in that subject area aligned to the North Carolina Standard Course of Study. And so as we're looking at a workforce of over 15 percent of beginning teachers and many of them coming in through non-traditional pathways, it's really important for us to put high-quality resources, materials, and professional development in the hands of our teachers. And very candidly, our teachers are asking for that right now. They're asking for additional resources to be able to support. And we certainly do not want to rely on our classroom teachers to be able to feel like they have to go out and purchase their own resources to provide a high-quality, rigorous education for their students. So with that being said, I just highlighted a few things on this, many of which I spoke to. Some of the other asks include curriculum development for computer science. So I've kind of spoken to this before, but a lot of what comes out of the General Assembly in terms of revisions to courses for high school graduation, it lands on the LEA or the school district to develop the curriculum for that. And so obviously, we have to develop the funding for that as well. And we feel very confident that computer science will become a high school graduation requirement, and so we want to get ahead of that by designing a high-quality curriculum for our teachers. Additionally, I spoke to the guaranteed experiences, specifically right now we're focusing in on 6th through 8th grade ELA. This was specifically targeted not only from the teacher request and the administrator request for this, but also specifically our data and really being able to support all of our subgroups and the diverse learners that we are serving. We did this work a lot in elementary with the adoption of Letterland and systematic phonics, and so now we're looking at how do we continue that pathway for middle school. And then last but not least, as Carol said, we currently have 34 VEX programs running in our schools, but we want to see it at all of our schools, very candidly. And so Mr. Perizy has spoken before about the need for additional coaches' supplements, but also just being able to provide the support and the registration so that those things are not financial barriers for schools to run that program. are not financial barriers for schools to run that program. Additionally, one of the things that you may or may not know, we partner with Cabarrus Arts Council. And so we had a meeting with them earlier this year and just as everything, the cost is rising, so is this partnership. And so right now we have the opportunity to afford every child in this district experience with fine arts in instances where they may not be able to go see performances or productions and it just infuses a different experience that is tied to the North Carolina Standard Course of Study where the performers come to the schools, which is pretty awesome. So we've been, had amazing partnership for years, but obviously there is a financial piece to that, not only with the Arts Council, but also the transportation so that we can centralize those productions for students. And then the next request is really an interesting one because we have grown accustomed, we have grown accustomed to some tools and instruments that were previously paid for out of ESAR, which we will no longer be able to fund. So one of those things is the Canvas Learning Management System where we did not always have that for all of our elementary school students. And so as you may be aware, that is where we house all of our curriculum. That is also a phenomenal parent communication tool so that we can provide transparency not only in the curriculum, but also communication in terms of assignments and grades. And so there is a fiscal cost to that. We've been paying for that out of ESAR. And so with that money going away, that money, you know, obviously if we want to continue with a tool like that, we have to ask for the funds for that. And then last but not least, Carol shared this, but continuing to expand upon and maintaining the program thing that we do have with program choice. So for instance, we have schools going through the IB reauthorization process. And so I feel like I keep saying this, but things continue to increase in price. So everything with every vendor is continuing to increase. And so we want to be cognizant that we want to continue to be able to provide that high-quality programmatic theming at our schools. And with that comes an additional cost. All of those are not funded by state positions. That is something that we choose to do at a local level. So that is all I have in terms of the highlight requests from curriculum and instruction. Are there any questions? Yes.
I assume that our expanded funding for program choice options is in dovetail with our constant review of those programs system-wide.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Sarah, if we were not able to get the funding for some of these things, what would that mean for next year? Because I'm just, so I'm thinking about what Carol said to us earlier, which is we haven't looked at this since pre-pandemic.
Yes.
Well, this looks like to me, you're trying to prepare kids for the new world we're all living in. So if we don't get it, then what happens?
It's a great question. I mean, I'll be very honest, I think we're going to have to make some really hard decisions. And so I think when we're thinking about the ever-changing workforce and the needs of our students, the differentiation, the scaffolding that needs to go into play to be able to provide them things like 21st century skills, it could be things like we're not going to be able to develop a curriculum for computer science or we're going to have to no longer offer the amount of pre-kindergarten seats we want because we can't buy the furniture to license the classrooms. And so, you know, very honestly, those are going to be some hard decisions that we're going to have to make. And I mean, we're familiar with the TRIGO process. We do it frequently in terms of prioritization and I think we'll match that up with our strategic plan and our data, but I really hope that we're not in that place because I firmly believe that, you know, we are doing incredible things and I do not want to lose that momentum as a school system, specifically with our academic growth and achievement. But one of the things I'm most proud of in serving in Cabarrus County schools is that it's not just about academics. It's that we really do prioritize the whole child and we look at things like what are guaranteed experiences such as fine arts, VEX, that we can actually say, students are getting a well-rounded experience and whether or not they're able to provide, be engaged in these things and extracurricular activities, we know they're getting them as core experiences during the school day.
But also to be clear, you have done the hard part, right? I mean, Carol's not giving, you didn't get to this list without already taking out your wishes, right?
I don't want to tell you my number before I got to this number. But I will tell you, at this point, this is the essentials to make the strategic plan happen. Anything that you might have said was extra nice to have, in my personal opinion, has been cut down. The reality is, we know computer science is going to become a high school graduation requirement. I don't know how we teach that course without curriculum development, but we're going to have to make some hard trade-offs through the process. But my number was probably double, that maybe double.
You worked really hard one weekend.
I did. I worked really hard one weekend to really narrow it down and I went back to the strategic plan and I went back to our three-year timeline and said, this is what's going to have to happen in order to make those things happen for our school system. And again, I think that that's a huge point of pride as people come to this district for the high-quality education. And so we worked hard to spell out each of those items so that our, our community understands what the trade-offs would be as it relates to that. Thank you.
And just to piggyback off of what Pam just said, this is how we are communicating this to our public, how we're communicating this to the board, and then what we ultimately go sit in front of our county commissioners to say, hey, this is what we need, this is why we need it, and this is how much it's going to cost. So just to echo what you're trying to say over there, that's the point of all of this.
Absolutely, absolutely. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reeves.
One thing I wanted to add, Sarah did an incredible job of not only summarizing into this request what we needed from a materials perspective, but also layering in the PD to make sure people could use it and use it with fidelity. And so it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to buy new resources if we don't invest in what it takes to train people to use them and to optimize the use of them. So along with buying the stuff, we are also planning for PD to equip our teachers to be successful. And while we do that, they're feeling a whole lot more motivated to deliver quality education to our students. And so that's a part of this ask as well. Next, and finally, we have included in our budget some incremental spending for resources and PD as it relates to equipping our school-level personnel to deal with all of the student wellness challenges and opportunities and mental health issues that we're experiencing. I can tell you, and I'm going to invite Dr. Ross to come up and talk about this a little bit more specifically, but one of the most startling pieces of information that emerged from our allotment meetings last week were several principals sharing data with us that summarized what is happening in their schools as it relates to student wellness and mental health issues. And I can't get it out of my heart or my head. And one principal said, I had to take time out from everything else to teach my staff how to deal with this stuff because they don't know how. And so the PD is critically important because of what they're seeing on a day-to-day basis. And I'll let Mary Beth share that with you.
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank you all for your support for student wellness and mental health. As you recall, about a year ago, I was here asking for your support to purchase the Positivity Project, which is our core SEL curriculum, and the Panorama Student Wellness Survey that we've implemented this year. And both of those things have been incredibly positive. We're having the P2 showcase Wednesday to highlight some of the good work that our schools are doing. And I do really appreciate your support with that. But what that has done has enlightened us to the needs that are out there in terms of students beyond the core supports that they need. We have students who need very intensive support and we need to figure out a way to meet our teachers' needs and how to help these students in the classroom. So as Carol was saying, last week, we had several, and these are elementary principals, who shared with us some of their concerns with the high needs that they have at their schools. And one of the elementary schools shared with us that this year alone, they have done 22 suicide assessments, 14 assessments in the last month. They have done 19 threat assessments, students saying giving a threat, threatening someone else, threatening a teacher. And then with all of this, they've had 10 school-based mental health providers coming into the school to support. They've had to refer 25 to 30 students to outside mental health. The teachers need and the counselors, the school psychologist, they all need training on how to meet these needs. Another principal shared with us that just some individual school, like there's just three or four kids who have such significant needs at their school and they struggle with emotional regulation. They get so out of control that even the most highly-trained people are like, how do I de-escalate this child? How do I get them to calm themselves down and not escalate? And we need training. We need to train our personnel and how do you de-escalate our students when they get to that point? So I think that is the request and that was what was shared in our meeting that was so impactful and we were just like, wow, we had no idea that those needs were that significant.
The other thing that really landed on me when principals were sharing this information with us over the course of the allotment meetings is that student wellness issues and mental health issues do not target certain students or populations. Everyone is dealing with some level of struggle here. And so our work in this regard has to be broad and impactful and meaningful and led to this request. So I purposely did not talk about any numbers because I didn't want us to get hung up on those as we were moving through, but we're going to get to that shortly. And I'm going to jump over these two and come back to them if you will. So here is the ask with numbers attached to it. And so I'll just walk you through the document and please ask any questions along the way. I know it's a lot of information. It was really important to me that it be on one page because it doesn't tell as great of a story when it is separated into multiple pages. So I apologize for a bit of an eye chart, but I think it's nice to have it all in one spot. First of all, the information that is highlighted in a shade of blue at the top reflects the redirection of appropriation from our county back from capital outlay into operating expense. We have had several conversations with the county and I think we've also shared with the board on several occasions that this money is already built into the county's budget and is coming to us. We do not have to ask for it. It is the bare minimum that we will receive from the county. And again, it's basically just redirecting the money back from capital outlay into operating expense. And just as a reminder, the reason it was redirected out of operating expense into capital is because the county had recognized that we had a proliferation of ESAR funding and a pretty healthy fund balance and that they asked that we use those sources of funding for three years while they redirected operating expense appropriations to capital outlay so we could knock some projects out over there. When we did what they asked us to do, we are actually getting that money back into operating expense a year early, which is critically important because you all know that that has put tremendous pressure on our fund balance and our ability to serve our students. And so we're not asking for that. I just put it here so that you guys can remember that that money is coming back to us in the form of an operating expense projection for 2023, 2024. And our share of that is $4 million. And just like I indicated earlier, when we get money from the county, we have to give 7% of it to the charter schools and they are giving us the 7% to pass through. So that's the additional 300 and some odd thousand dollars. But that dollar amount, total dollar amount of 4. almost $4 million is not part of our ask, but will be coming to us back from capital outlay into operating expense in the coming school year. Cool? Okay, great. So now we'll start to get to information that relates to our continuation request and our expansion request. The incremental 0.5% funding to ensure that we can keep paying our certified local supplement at 12% is $650,000. The cost to the district of assuming a 7% increase to certified staff and a 4.5% salary increase to non-certified classified staff, as well as the increases in our retirement rate and our district share of healthcare cost is about $3.4 million. So the sum total of our continuation request is $4 million. If you look at the 3.4 salary and benefit increases and the ability to fully fund our 12% local certified supplement is right at $4 million. The good news is, we've had some conversations, preliminary conversations with the county and we're pretty close in the ballpark of what they thought that might look like for the upcoming school year. So that's good. Any questions about the dollars associated with continuation? All right, great. As it relates to expansion, our repairs and maintenance request is 1. almost $4 million. Our curriculum and instruction and student wellness ask is $3.5 million. So that totals $4.8 million, which is not our ask because I wanted you guys to know that, and I want the county to know, that we put our own skin in the game. And so as part of this zero-based budgeting effort and prioritizing what we were and we're not going to stand for as it related to these expansion requests, we made some tough decisions to reduce spending in some areas that I didn't consider to be easy to do. We had to make some tough choices and in some cases we eliminated cost, in other cases we just deferred them to future years. Because as I mentioned earlier, I do believe that we are setting ourselves up for some sharp ADM growth, which will help us fund some of those coming out of the 2023, 2024 school year. But the next year is tough for us for all the reasons that we talked about. So I just wanted you to know, we identified almost $1.2 million worth of cuts that we made through the zero-based budgeting process that related to broad-level cuts from a district office perspective because those are expenditures that are the furthest away from our students so that we could help support those that are closest to our students. And we also made some tough decisions to defer some technology needs to future years such as staff device refresh and also our audiovisual strategy as it relates to instruction in the classroom. So one thing I want to say, I don't want you to worry about staff being equipped with devices that are broken or don't work. One thing that Ben and his team have done an extraordinary job of this past year is getting their arms around the devices that we have, which ones work, which ones need replacing and getting us on a replacement cycle. Same thing with our software as well. Like for a long time, we didn't know what we had and we didn't know if we had some of the same thing in multiple places and we weren't leveraging our district buying power. And so they've done a good job of inventorying all of that out and making sure that we understand the cycle of refresh and the implications of what it means to wait a year. So it's not ideal, but it won't mean that our staff are equipped with devices that don't work. And I just want you to rest assured that we talked about that at length and our intention is to get back on our replacement cycle in 2024, 2025. So if you consider the tough choices that we made, oh, please.
There's a lot of numbers on this sheet, but that, that number of where you guys cut back, I don't see that, right?
It's, it's the budget reductions priorities through ZBB process. It's in brackets, 1.181828.
Oh, okay. There I see it. Now I see it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So if you consider that, our expansion request totals $3.7 million. And so the combined total request for expansion plus continuation is $8.3 million. Any questions?
What's the total, total ask though? The total that they're asking the county to fund us?
For operating expenses, $8.3 million.
Isn't it like 80 something million at some point?
Pardon?
The total that they pay, give us is more than $8 million.
80 million, right at 80 million.
80 million, it's something, okay.
For last year, or the year that we're in. Yes, sir.
Right, just maybe we could add that to that chart.
Well, I have it in another chart coming up. So if there are no further questions about operating expense, we'll move on to capital outlay. And we start our capital outlay conversations by taking a look at our capital plan, which has been presented to and approved by you, board. And we are focusing on the first seven And we are focusing on the first seven projects, as we've shared previously. And so our ask, as it relates to construction, focuses on what we will need in 2023, 2024 as it relates to those seven projects. They're all multi-year projects, but we do have some needs as early as 2023, 2024. And so if you look at our first capital ask, the top section where you see construction, and those are the needs that we've identified for 2023, 2024 that support the first seven projects on our capital plan, and that total ask is $5.6 million. And the capital plan has been shared with the board vice chair group at a high level, and we'll certainly be sharing this with the commissioners when we meet with them at the end of April. The next section, this entire chart reflects, you'll probably recall, we're keeping with the practice of the past where we talk about construction. We talk about our capital improvement projects that are high-dollar, greater than $499,000. We'll then talk about our smaller capital improvement projects that range anywhere from $25,000 to $499,999,000. And then we'll talk about our non-facilities and maintenance department needs. And so in the spirit of high-dollar items, we are bringing forth the continuation of funding needs for security camera replacement in our schools, which I don't have to tell you how important that is to make sure that we can provide safe and healthy environments for our students and staff. And then we have an item here for fuel tank expansion and refurbish in our bus garage. If I'm not mistaken, Dr. Bowles, we haven't done that in a long...
It's been quite a long time.
Yeah, a long, long time. And so we have a real need for capacity and also safety to make sure that we do that. The other items listed here under facility maintenance, those are our 10 priority projects, and this is where you see the high-dollar stuff like roof replacements and HVAC replacements. So not repairs, but actually replacements. And we have summarized the top 10 needs here, and that totals almost $37 million. So if you consider our construction needs in order to move forward with priorities 1 through 7 on the capital plan, plus our high-dollar capital items over $499,999,000, we are asking $44.6 million. And that's a big ask, and it is every year, and we need to keep this list in front of ourselves and in front of our county commissioners and understand that for every year we don't fund these, it just doesn't go away. It rolls over for consideration in the next year. And we have to react to and make tough choices to fund emergency situations. And we've had a handful of schools that we didn't expect to have to do an HVAC replacement in, in the current year that we had to. And so we have really good conversations with the county when we have to be nimble in that regard. But that is a summary of the capital ask for our high-dollar projects. This is the list of our projects that are in the $25,000 to $499,999,000. Used to be called the Top 35 List and totals right at $7.2 million, which is pretty consistent with what we've shared with the county in previous years. And you can see the different types of expenditures that we're looking at from a capital outlay perspective, and we provide this information to our county, and they will consider and prioritize based on funding availability. And then finally, from cap...
If I could, just as a former building principal, I want to point out that if you don't replace the roof, you're putting good money toward bad by constantly having folks there patching the roof. And so it's not like we're just moving money around. And so I just want to piggyback and echo and accentuate that point that these problems don't go away. They just turn around. And also within our facilities budget, they're constantly having to prioritize by this time of year. If it's not a health and safety issue, you're probably not going to get it fixed.
Right.
Because they have limited resources, and they have to prioritize as well. So I just want to point that out, that a leaky roof costs money. It's not like it's going to wait for us to replace it.
Yes, sir. Thank you for saying that. That's a great example. And even more horrifying is hearing a story not too long ago that a leaky roof was being mitigated with buckets and having to literally move students from a classroom into another classroom while we got to it to repair. So not good for our students.
So I just wanted to echo what Sam just said. On my list of questions before you even started this presentation was the capital projects. So I remember that number of 7.2, and I remember that a lot of things that were on there have just been continuing to put on there for year after year after year. Is there any way to express how important it is, other than what you've already done and what we've already been doing, that these things be funded? So for example, is there somewhere else that we can pull that money from? That's supposed to be like laughable, but not really, because it looks like these things need to be done, and they just have not been. Not good for students or people that are entering our building for all, at all. What I have next to it is these are health and safety risks.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Unfortunately, we don't get capital funding from the state, and so we don't have that opportunity. Now occasionally, they will have a grant opportunity, but we're talking about tiny dollars. Wouldn't make a dent in any of this, but that's hit or miss at best. And so...
Can you go back to that list? I'm sorry.
Yes, absolutely.
So I see bleacher, bleacher replacement somewhere. Where did I see that at?
It's on here. 26.
So is that bleacher being used? Like, if it needs to be replaced, is that... You see what I'm saying? So some of these things, if they on here and they need to be done, like, what's happening outside of that is what I would question. And then if something happens to a student as a result of not getting these things done, like, who does that fall on? And I'm not trying to labor this point here, but I just want us to all think about, when these things don't get done, that is hurtful to our entire community because somebody's child or somebody's parent or whoever could be in harm's way as a result of these things. So that's very concerning, and I just want that to be notated from me somewhere.
Yeah, and I'll try to get some additional information for our next conversation on April 3rd about the bleachers. Like, do we rope that section off? I don't know, but I'll try to get some additional information in that regard. Even then, it's not necessarily preventing somebody from stepping over there.
Yeah, Mrs. Hurned, and I can speak a little to that. The bleachers that, at both of those locations, do have broken pieces that aren't able to be used. It's not the entire bleacher, but it is an area that is not able to be used during the, whatever the event is. And it does pose a safety issue for those attending the event.
Yeah, and that's just one of 36 things. I'm sure everything on here is a safety risk for somebody, and I just don't want us to look at that lightly. And I don't think we are, but I just really want that to be out in front for everybody to understand this. So we're not saying we're okay with this. At least Keisha's not.
Well, and I just, I guess I would want to piggyback on that and say, you know, what are the legal fees associated with someone, you know, getting hurt on a bleacher, putting their foot in a pothole in a parking lot, not having keys that are getting access into buildings and doors and locks and safety, all that? So those are real concerns. But then also, the reality is, all this stuff costs more money the next year. I mean, I'm not the best at home repair, but from what I understand, like, even when you're doing stuff on your house, if you asked to do it last year and then you get an estimate this year, the prices just keep on going through the roof. So it's the same thing when we decide to build a building, or you want to build a roof. The cost of labor doesn't go down, and materials are all very expensive as well.
Absolutely.
I'm going to add this little tidbit again. If there's anyone out in the community that would like to sponsor any of these repairs or new bleachers for any of these schools, please call up here and let us know. And I'm sure that we can create an opportunity to let everyone in the community know that your organization or your business is the one that sponsored the repair of this or a new replacement item. I think that that is a great, great opportunity for businesses in our community to really help with our school system. So I'm going to put that out there again.
How else can we put that out there? Like, can we put that on the website, across the banner somewhere?
I'm not the website keeper, but I know him, so I'll check that out. So, great. Thank you all for those comments. Oops, somebody went too fast. I went too far, sorry. Fudge, hang on. No. I want to go backwards. Here, okay. So our county has been super consistent in funding our non-facility and maintenance department request from a capital perspective for many, many years in the area of $1 million. And I'm super excited. When we collaborated to come up with this list for this year, we were able to dedicate more dollars to our school furniture, which is great. We've been in the 150 to 200 range. Over the past couple of years, we're dedicating $400,000 of that budget towards school furniture, which our school personnel will be super excited to hear about. We're also looking for some replacement activity buses and some technology needs as well. So this was like, we used almost the same ZBB process that we did for operating expenses for our non-FMD capital and lined around these as our most important projects for the coming school year. So if you, just putting all of the capital pieces in one place, we're looking at a total ask of 53. almost $9 million for capital. And then putting operating expense and capital together, Rob, this is where I was comparing what we're asking to what we currently get. If you look at the first column of data, you'll see what was approved for school year 2022, 2023. School year 2022, 2023, you'll see the requested increases that we've already talked about, that total $8.3 million from an operating expense perspective, and then the total budget proposed for the coming school year. And then you'll see the comparison to what we received funded from a capital perspective this school year versus what we're asking for next year. So that just puts it in perspective as to what we are funded for this year in a comprehensive manner, adding both the operating expense ask to the capital outlay. So that is all of the prepared slides. I did want to go back because we've already talked about this, but just so you know what it means when you go back through. I did summarize specifically the choices that we made to defer operating expenses from 2023, 2024 to future years. And we talked about the audiovisual instructional strategy at school level. We talked about the device refresh for our staff. We also made some decisions around our career in college promise support. That was an initiative we were going to take on in 2023, 2024. We're going to defer that by one year. We're still going to do it. We're just not going to do it next year. And then also, we were pursuing some partnerships with the junior achievement organization. We're not giving up on those. We're actually, to your point, Laura, going to be looking for some corporate sponsors that might help us with that because we could be producing their future employees, perhaps, in a give back there. So we're just going to pursue some corporate sponsorships. If that doesn't work, that will be a project that we'll take on again and look at in 2024, 2025. So the biggest takeaway is that I would like for you to have heard in this presentation is that your district worked very hard to put together a budget that prioritizes our great needs. And we did not assume that we would be funded at future or past levels. We put all of our time and energy in developing our needs right now from the bottom up. And it was collaborative, and we had input from many, many stakeholders, and the ask is big, but the need is tremendous. And so as I started, I'll finish. This is a student-centered and staff-serving budget, and we're proud to put it in front of you, and we're looking forward to continued conversations and the chance to tell this story to our commissioners. Up until this point, when we've shared tidbits of this with our partners at the county, they've been very intrigued and listened and considered and haven't pushed back. And so we'll see how all of that lands when we actually get to the presentation at the end of April and then ultimately the appropriation. But this is where we are, and our next conversation, my goal is, in addition to giving the public a chance to ask any questions against this presentation, if you have any questions that you want me to address between now and then, and come prepared on the 3rd to answer, please don't hesitate to get those to me, and I'll prepare responses formally on the 3rd. Any questions?
Anything else, board members?
I just have two. So, and this may be a Sarah question. I heard her talk about Canvas and maybe not, did I hear we may not be able to provide Canvas 2023, 24?
That was in our ask.
It's in our ask, but if we don't get that, then we don't know. We won't be able to.
At the elementary level, right? Yeah. We have it at other levels, not elementary.
Okay, okay. And then the other question I had was about the P2 project. Has the board been invited to that?
I don't know.
I think it was in the board report.
Yeah, I think it was, too.
Okay, okay. I didn't see it. I'm sorry.
It's Wednesday, right? All morning.
Middle Pleasant Middle School at 8:00.
Cool stuff.
I just wanted to say thank you to our county representative for being here. I appreciate that. And I just want to say thank you, Carol, for all the work that you've done, and the executive team, thank you. It's clear to me that you worked hard and that you were very concerned about this, being well-informed, made hard decisions, and that the kids are at the center of it. So I really appreciate that because I don't have the time to do that. So I appreciate that you've made those hard decisions and that you've come to a consensus. I think it's important that people understand that our staff, not only are they excellent, but that they work well together and that us as a board, we also work well together. And so that this is a well-fought-out plan that we're asking for based on real needs. So thank you.
And that's a lovely comment. Thank you for sharing that. And one of the side benefits of this journey, I said this, and people looked at me like I was crazy a couple of weeks ago, like, I found joy in all of these conversations, partially because I'm a nerd, but also because I'm a nerd that stands for students. But one of the unexpected outcomes of all of this work is that people grew connected to our budget process, not only in the space in which they manage their day-to-day work, but how does this whole thing work and what does it mean? And so the power lift that that provides our district when our leaders understand what a local budget development process is and what that means and the choices that have to be made, that was a good unintended consequence that came from all of this. Now we are more accountable and connected to our budget, and nothing but good can come from that.
If I might, I just want to, I find budgets being moral documents, that they reflect our priorities. And I just want to applaud you and everyone that our kids are embedded in everything, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, I've never seen anybody help to eloquently explain, you know, 80-plus million dollars the way you did. I mean, it wasn't boring. The board was, I mean, because when you do this, it could be very boring. And I felt like I had a stake in what was being discussed and an opportunity to understand things that a lot of people shy away from. When you start dealing with that amount of money, you know, you don't understand where it's going, why it's going there, and you helped to do that very well. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. I will share that you could never convince me, no matter how hard you tried. Like, a lot of people approach this by solving to the number they think they're going to get from the county. I will never do that. I will never shortchange our students in that regard. Now, if you tell me to do it, I'll do it, but I won't do it on my own accord.
Anything else, board members?
Yeah, I had my comments. Again, the zero-based budget thing is something I've asked for a long period of time, and it's the first time in 10 years at least that we've even addressed it, so to actually have some skin in the game and actually say, "Hey, these are things we are doing now that we're going to, you know, make a decision not to do so to get these other funded..." other funded, these priorities funded says a lot. It also says a lot that Rodney's here today, tonight, listening to our presentation. We appreciate that. So he's got to communicate that to his folks over at the county as well. And so we want to make sure his questions get answered. But lastly, we have, every year, we have a public hearing on the budget. So the public is allowed to come out here and talk to us on what has been presented here or anything else. But what exactly are we looking for the public to come to us with? You're looking for proposals? You're looking for support?
It's my understanding that historically, it's been just for any questions or comments that they had about what I just presented.
So any member of the public that has a question, but they can do that by sending us an email or...
Absolutely.
Or otherwise, but to show their support for any one of these items that we presented tonight, that is a way to do that, to say, besides just us and the board, it's important to the community as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. We appreciate it. Okay, board members, we will move to 5.01. And I need a motion to convene in closed session to consult with an attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 14331811A3. Yes?
So moved.
I have to read that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I haven't finished yet, I'm sorry. It's long. And to consider confidential personnel matters pursuant to General Statute 14331811A6. Now you can go.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, we are having fun up here tonight. We have a motion by Ms. Escobar and a second by Ms. Lindsay. All those in favor to convene in closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you everyone for being a part of tonight's meeting.